Time being seven o'clock, I'll call a Monday, June 28th, 2021 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, plan's not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. I'll skip down to action items. Entertain a motion to nominate Christine Byrd as second delegate to the CMRPC.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Carrie.
You can vote for yourself. You can vote for yourself.
Unless you don't want to.
Even if you don't want to do it, you still got to.
Okay, in front of you tonight is a request for an extension of time for the planning board action for Seven Founders Court dated 6/25/2021. They hereby request the planning board extend the time for action on said application to September 30th, 2021, and hereby request the planning board to continue the public hearing on said application till August 9th, 2021. The applicant is Brittany Espire.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carrie unanimously. Just to let you know, the submission for 85 Main Street, the application for site plan review and approval and land disturbance permit. For the, I guess, that's the whistle stop, it needs a, it's an incomplete submission, it needs stormwater management formed on that said site. So we will not even accept it since it's incomplete. Tony, you've got a few minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I may under any direction before. Just like to share a, two quick pieces of information. One is actually our new building commissioner has started today. Patrick. Mary Patrick's last name?
Dalbrand.
Dalbrand, my apologies. Just joined us today and from the city of Marlboro. I'm very excited to have him onboard. Also like to provide a quick update with respect to the Eastland project. It's been a few weeks now since I've had an update from them. And like to share, so at this stage, they're somewhat in the wall right now, but they do anticipate in the coming weeks, the removal of materials from the back. And also received updating as well from, from Mr. Ward and from, from Eastland Partners with respect to water. They have had a very experienced, and they are discussing the ability to size the water main pipes appropriately for commercial intentions of residential uses in the back. Likewise too, he also shared with me that they have been in communication with Mass DOT with respect to the future build out of their site, and particularly the question about signalization and turning lane and so on. It was conveyed from him and, and it's been also mentioned through the team at DOT working on Route 20 project that as the Eastland project moves forward in the future, that they will be able to accommodate, should there be any, for signalization and turning lane and so on. But at this stage, the initial analysis is very preliminary, so as the project moves forward in the next year or two and so on, they'll have some better concrete information of who the end users will be at the site. So that will be a very important factor to, to show counts and, and to get the numbers correct, so to properly service that site if you will, for signalization.
So would it be fair to say that probably going to be this a year out before anything really happens on that site as far as?
And yes, it would be fair to say, and actually, maybe a year or two.
Even longer.
Maybe a year or two. I, I know they are working with various folks, including a few regional and, and the Mass Office of Business Development with respect to end users there. They're also on, on my own list as prospective tenants, let's say.
Yeah.
Other parties that are looking for sites. These days, there's been a ton of interest for distribution centers and so on, not only here, but in the region. Not saying that that is the fit though, for, for that site, but where, where I'm going with that is that they are, they are looking for, for tenants and they're working with different groups to, to get the right mix if you will.
But they still have to get pad, pad, pad ready, I guess is.
Yes.
Still looking at.
Yes.
A lot, a lot before that happens.
So, and the, and the last note too, I did speak to our DPW Commissioner this morning as well, just comparing notes as with respect to that day. He also did show that the, the site as it relates to erosion control and so on has been, has been stabilized and has been working appropriately if you will. So I will have, as I said, keep this part of just a monthly update, if I focus with additional information, let's, let's move forward. If there's something of urgent, of pressing that comes up, I'll certainly, you know, let you know as soon as I can. That's all for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Tony. The time being 7:05, we have a public hearing for Pioneer Drive, application for special permit and site plan review and approval. Applicant, BVO LLC, owner Sunny Hill Realty LLC, for a marijuana cultivation facility. I'll first read the public meeting notice pursuant to the provisions of Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 23, Marijuana Overlay District. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 28th, 2021, at 7:05 PM in the second floor of the meeting room of the town hall on a special permit and site plan review and approval application submitted by BVO LLC to allow for a marijuana cultivation facility in an existing building with existing parking on property located at 4 Pioneer Drive at Oxford, Mass, owned by Sunny Hill Realty LLC, by deed recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Book 12456, page 224, and shown on assessors map 8 parcel A 04.03 in the Marijuana Overlay Zoning District. Plans, the application and plans may be reviewed in the Oxford Town Hall or in the off, the, the office of the town clerk or the management, the land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard should be here. And I'll, next I'll just read stuff we have received from departments to date. Through email from Anthony Sad, the Chief of Police. It was, it was received by Tony and it says they are good to go. Police department's all set. That was dated June 28th and dated June 28th from the Board of Health, the Planning Board members. The Board of Health have reviewed the application for special permit prepared for 4 Pioneer Drive, Oxford, Massachusetts. The proposed special permit application is for a proposed marijuana cultivation facility. The Board of Health has no issues with the request at this time, however, they respect the right to review and comment at a later time. From the Board of Health. That's the two departments that have responded to date. So I'll turn it over to you to let us.
How is everybody tonight?
Very good.
So we, this is. I'm just going to ask if you could state your names. Yeah, so my name's Ken Lucas. I'm the owner of BVO LLC. You stated that it was, the building was owned by Sunny Hill Realty. Since we submitted the documents, the building's changed hands, so it's now owned by a separate LLC that myself and my father own.
Okay.
So, just a.
I'm only going by what, what was in the official documentation. Thank you for the clarification.
I thought I'd just mention that. So this is Amanda, she's from Greer and Hanlon Engineering Firm. They did the ASBIL plans on this, so I hired them to do the site plan as well, and Amanda will present the, the current state of the building and what we propose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, Amanda Cavallieri with Greer and Hanlon. We're here tonight for a change in use of site plan and special permit for, for Pioneer Drive. BVO LLC is looking to take the existing building that is currently on site, is an 11,000 square foot building, metal framed building, single story, that's currently on site with associated septic system, stormwater management system, paved driveway, all the utilities intact. And they're looking to change that use from a previously used woodworking facility over to a marijuana cultivation facility. The site's located off of Southbridge Road on Route 20, and it's within an industrial zone and Marijuana Overlay District. The only exterior work that's being, that's proposed to be conducted, you can see right now, you have your existing building, your driveway that goes entirely around the building, and what they're proposing to do on the exterior. The only things that are being added are striping for parking, so we'll have a total of 16 parking spaces based on the employee, employees anticipated during, during the operating hours, and four foot wide concrete ramp to allow access into the building. The proposed use is not anticipating and not allowed, not allowing 18 miller trucks to do any deliveries. This is a wholesale facility for cultivation, and they are, it will not be open to the public. They're only allowing one customer at a time, and that would be by appointment only, and any deliveries or pickups would be by box truck only. The interior is really where the majority of the work is going to take place, where they're going to be, you know, constructing the walls of going through the building department for the interior side of things. And as far as the wastewater that's produced from the cultivation, cultivation facility, they're planning on using an evaporator coil that's going to discharge and be removed by a recycling facility and not discharged directly into the septic system. And that's the bulk of the, bulk of the work.
So I have some comments. One on the evaporator drum. I, I brought some, some documentation from a company we've, we've chosen. And, and different towns allow for, for different ways to get rid of your wastewater. The wastewater, it contains mostly metals, nitrogen, like trace amounts, but not everybody wants to just dump that in their sewer. There is no sewer here, so regardless, we've decided to go with this evaporator coil and have a green waste company come and pick up the condensed water. I have some paperwork on that equipment. And then as far as the odor, I, I know that's always a pretty, that's like the main question that most people are concerned with in the town for obvious reasons. I've hired an engineering company, MEP, Mechanical Electric and Electrical and Plumbing Company, CISC engineers, who they've done at least a dozen cultivations alone in the state of mass. I mean, they've done retail shops, manufacturing, they've been in, they've, they've done other industries that produce odor as well. So they, I mean, they, they gave me a little write-up and some equipment. I can, I can give you guys this document, these documents, and you could review them. And if you have any questions, you know, you could ask me now or email me, either way is fine. But, you know, if odor, by this time in, in the Massachusetts cannabis industry, if odor was a big issue, if it was something that people were having a hard time overcoming, you'd be reading about it more in the papers. It's, they basically just use carbon scrubbers, UV lights, and like a recycling system, so any air that leaves the building is scrubbed, cleaned, and returned into the building. So I can, if, would you, would you like to?
Just with the evaporator coil, so basically it's evacuating the water and what's left over, is it, is it still in liquid form?
No, it's a solid. So the same company I, Charles River Insurance, they work a lot with, they're like a fairly large insurance company in Massachusetts. They may be located in other places, but they've, they've really gone after the insurance industry in the cannabis market and with, on top of insurance for these facilities, because it has to be specific, it has to be CCC approved for not only the, the business, but the building has to be specifically insured through, through a certain company that has these types of insurance policies. They also have a lot of other divisions of their company, so it's, it's all kind of tied in. So Charles River Insurance has a sister company that comes and will remove the waste. It's, it's a solid mass. And this is a smaller facility, so we'll only have about 75 gallons of runoff per day, which is, it, it kind of sounds like a lot, but it isn't.
And what does that, you have to go through, is that after goes through the evaporator coils or?
No, that's before.
And I guess.
So it, so basically, there's, we'll probably only need about four gallon, four gallons per minute for our evaporator coil, and it's basically a 55, it looks like a 55 gallon drum. I have pictures of it in here, but there's a stack that, there's like a, a pipe that runs up through the top of the building, evaporates the water out through there, and then leaves a solidified mass.
And that air is not toxic or anything?
No, I mean, it's scrubbed, but it's like, it's mostly just nitrogen and heavy metals.
That's going, but that's going into the bottom of the tank, I would assume.
The, yeah, so only water is evaporated. So, yeah, so everything else is left.
Okay.
But they, they still, they still scrub the, the air from the exhaust pipe.
Is that going to have odor too? Is that going to go through your odor control system?
Yeah. All, any air that has potential to leave the building will be scrubbed. It's, it's, it's basically carbon scrubbers is the main source of how they, how they eliminate odor. And that's not just in the cannabis industry, it's in any industry that creates an unpleasant odor that neighbors don't want to be bothered by.
Do you operate any other facilities or is this your first?
No, um, no, this is my first venture.
Okay. Well, the only thing I want to caution you on, I, I know it was brought up, in fact, I'm going to ask Tony to talk about that.
Right.
You've got your, your site plan, there isn't, there isn't a lot of space to put any equipment outside, from what I can see. So I don't know how big those scrubbers are, I'm only going by what I see on Route 56. There's a large Vang, Van, Van Garden?
Yeah.
And a former distribution facility there, and they have some units.
Huge.
At least nine of them in the front of that building right now that are getting set up on stanchions on the outside of those buildings. Now, I don't know if it's odor control, I don't know what they're for, but the things are as big as trailer truck bags, and there's, there's, there's nine of them going, and they have to build a special thing. I just don't want you to go through this site review process and then down the road, when you come up with something, you're going to have to go back to the drawing board again.
Yeah, so this facility, myself, in the head of cultivation, we've designed the entire facility, I've worked with engineers already, specific engineers from HVAC companies, and what you're seeing, you're probably seeing two things, maybe a, a generator and the other things.
I don't know what they are. It's so big, they, they, they're unloaded with, on a flatbed with a crane, and they had to build a road right next to the building.
Those are, those are the, that's the HVAC. So that's the heating, cooling, air conditioning, and dehumidification. Like I said, we've, we've built this, the inside of the building has been planned, equipment, design, we've had architects. The HVAC for this facility will be put on the roof.
Okay. Again, this is, this is a different scope.
Right.
I know what I'm seeing is a tremendously large scope.
I'm not sure how.
But I just want to make sure that what you're giving us on paper won't change because of one of these things, okay? Like odor control. And the second one question I have is, what about electricity?
So I, before I, before, when we were looking to purchase the building, one of the first steps I took were to contact National Grid to find out if the electricity could be increased, which it can be, I just need to hire my own electrician. The tickets already, I already have a ticket with National Grid to upgrade the service.
Okay, I didn't know where the Cannabis Commission stand on those, because I know of a few cultivation facilities, and right next to them, they put in solar panels, farms.
Yeah.
To feed those facilities.
Solar doesn't really work with growing cannabis.
Well, you could fool me, because I've seen it cultivate in Leicester.
Yeah.
They, they had a facility across the street on Route 9 to service them.
Oh, wow.
Okay?
It's interesting.
And I think this one in Leicester, behind the building, they're putting up a solar.
Right.
I think, I think, I don't know what the Cannabis Commission's theory is on this, okay? I thought it was renewable energy based, okay? So I'm just raising it to you.
Right.
Okay, because I just don't know, but what the ones I've seen had associated solar panel farms with them.
That's interesting.
To mediate some of that electricity. I just want your plan to be good. If we're going through this, I want you to be happy with your plan, and there's nothing, there's no surprises that you're going to, you may have had to find out.
So.
You're going to have a hard time putting anything on that property.
Yeah.
You've got a building that takes most of it now.
That's why we, when we looked at it, we, we made sure that there is, the roof could hold enough weight. It holds two pounds per square inch, which the HVAC system for this building will be $700,000, it's state of the art, and I've gone through with engineers and.
Okay.
There's no problem with putting the.
Again, you're the expert, we're not. I'm only, I'm only going by what I've seen and what I.
So, yeah, I mean, the, I've never ran a commercial facility, but I spent my life working in this industry. Our head of cultivation, he has six years' experience in the cannabis industry here in Massachusetts. He's designed multiple buildings in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Been subcontracted.
Then I, then I, you answered my questions, I just wanted to raise, Tony's big issue was again in odor control.
Yeah.
And I'm going to let him talk about that, okay?
So I got a couple of questions. What's the number of employees you think you're going to have? I noticed you've got 16 parking spaces, is that pretty much going to be?
Yeah, so you have to leave one part, we'll probably have nine, eight to nine employees on location per shift. We're going to run two shifts. With 16 parking lots, you have to leave one handicap and one for, one, one handicap and one for a visitor. Because this is not a public building, we'll only have one visitor at a time by appointment, not just because it's a public building, but for security purposes as well.
And you're always, you said you're going to run two shifts, so what are your hours of operation going to be?
We are, that's in our HCA, I should know that.
I mean.
Eight to 10.
Yeah, I was going to say, is it seven to three, three to 11?
Yeah, 24 hours.
Yeah, that, that was, we wanted 24 hours just because, you know, with plants, they're, it's, it's, they're very sensitive, so say something, an alarm goes off with one of these automatic feeding systems at 12 at night, somebody's going to have to go there and address this issue, otherwise it could cost the company hundreds of thousands of dollars. But our, our.
So say other than emergencies, are they running like two a.m. shift?
7 a.m. to 10 p.m.
That's fine. And again, you are in an industrial area, so it's not like you're in a neighborhood. Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
And like I said, obviously if there's an emergency, somebody's going to want to call that night, you have to go in and figure it out.
Right. But I mean, the way we're building this facility out, it's, it's going to be state of the art, so we don't foresee too many, too many instances where we're going to have to wake up at 2:00 in the morning to drive to Oxford and fix something.
You say that now.
Yeah.
Just don't call us.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll say. Anyone else up here? Want to say it? No? Okay, Tony.
Sure, so I don't know if it's easier, but.
You can say it.
So just like to share a few comments, particularly with respect to odor control, and like provide some, an update, some information. Recently, we did request for peer review as it relates to the odor control systems. And we have reached out to, to a firm, although we have not received a proposal yet at this time. And the applicant's here, and you certainly correctly, the applicant has shared though that at this stage of the process, that a detailed odor control plan will be provided as part of the state application, if I'm correct.
So, like, as I was mentioning before, we hired an experienced MEP architect. And the way the process goes is, once I get my provisional license, which I should have within a couple of months, then we go through the fingerprint process and the background check, and sometime after that, you submit your floor plan to the CCC. This is something they, they have to approve, wants to prove, it cannot be changed. If you do want to change it, it's a huge hassle, so you really want to get it right this, the first time. With that being said, until the CCC approves our final floor plan, the MEP architect isn't going to design a complete odor control system for an intricate building with many different rooms before anything's set in stone. One, it costs too much money, two, everybody's busy, right? Everybody's always busy, but especially right now because of the last, because of COVID, it's, so it's, as the process goes, we won't have a detailed intricate odor remediation system put in, plan put in place until the CCC finalizes our floor plan, which, I mean, it should be fairly, you know, within, within three to four months, I would imagine. But, I mean, as far as the floor plan goes, we had an architect, we worked with an architect to design the inside of the building. Ms. Callahan and maybe a few other employees have seen the floor plan, and it's, it's what we hope will, will be the final floor plan. The CCC could ask for some changes, but we don't foresee that. But as soon as, as soon as the, the floor plan's finalized, then we'll have the MEP engineers go through the facility and design, design it, which they've done with multiple facility, cannabis cultivation facilities in the past and had good, really good success, you know, remediating the odor.
And so, Mr. Chairman and members, an important provision within the HCA, the Host Communitie Agreement, as it relates to odor technology, and it's in page 10, section 13, odor control technology, there is an important safeguard there, should the board wish to include as a, as a condition when the time comes for approval. And what I, with respect to safeguard, if, if there is an issue of complaints from, from residents, if the town receives five or more complaints representing separate households with respect to odor impacts, in relation to the operation of the establishment, the company shall be required to meet with the Board of Selectment, which may require additional mitigation measures be taken, as the company so expects to address the specific nature of complaints. So this provision, which is, which is agreed to include in the HCA, may be something if the board wishes to include as a, as a condition as well. Further, two other points to this, the board may also, when the time comes, that the applicant submits an application to the state, which I do believe is part of the process, but either way, then application will be forwarded to, to the board and to the staff. And. And, and finally, to, on this particular piece too, although, and I could be in error, but I don't recall seeing the, the location or exact location of the scrubbers on, on the rooftop or whatever the structures may be. So if, if there is for our next meeting, just revise plan indicating where the approximate location may be on that front. And as part of this submission requirement, the applicant is required to include a security plan, which has been reviewed by, by police, a line queue plan, the host community agreement, and certainly all of them, the traditional requirements of site plan review, special permit application. The board may wish, energy use plan, to my knowledge, I, I don't recall seeing, I, I don't recall seeing any detail on that. And again, it could be an error, but if there's any information to provide, certainly, I think that would be helpful.
There was something submitted on there about the energy that it's gonna use.
Yeah.
Significant.
To the applicant's benefit, we did include the, the documentation provided
Right, right.
to the Board of Selectment.
So the application has already been submitted to the CCC and I, I can get you copies of, of documents you might be interested from, from the application. So one of them is an, an energy use plan. And there's, there might be a few other documents you might be interested in, but.
But you said it's like four to five months out before they.
Well, I submitted my, I'm a social equity, I'm in the social equity program, which gives me priority. So when I submit my application, it'll go towards the, not to the very top. The very top is economic empowerment, which is a different group of people.
Bizarre how all this works.
So they put me to the top. Usually it takes at, at least four months for them to review your application and ask for RFIs. They reviewed my application in two weeks and gave me three RFIs. I resubmitted that application, this was probably a month ago, so I would expect to have provisional within a couple of months. And at that point, once I have provisional, then I could bring forward a detailed plan with, literally.
That's what I, that's what I was getting at, to see something.
But usually you get, usually before that happens, you, you, you're able to obtain site plan and special use permit.
Because right now, we're just looking at shallow, basically shallow of a building.
Right.
Which we're not doing.
Right.
And that could change, that could change depending on what the CC comes back and tells you, right?
Yeah, and I, I think they're the experts in this, okay? I just wanted to caution the applicant, if something has to go on that site because of his cannabis thing, that whatever we approve may not show what you needed to show.
So I've spent probably over two years planning this building and working with, like I said, I've been in the cannabis industry for quite some time. I, I know a lot of people, I have a lot of connections. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to, to get this far. But, you know, I've spent about two and a half years talking to professionals. A lot of them are my friends who have started their own businesses in other states, in this state. And I've run businesses before, I've owned a business before and I've never put so much effort and thought in planning into anything in my entire life.
You're going through a lot of red tape with these commissions and everything else. I, I understand that. I just, I just wanted you to, you to be comfortable with the plan you're submitting.
And I appreciate that, I do.
That's all, that's the only reason I raise. In fact, I think it's a good little business for the town, Oxford to be involved in.
Thank you.
All right, y'all set to it?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a last quick, we are awaiting comments from DPW and, and also I did speak to the applicant this, this morning with respect to follow up with the fire department.
Right, I thought I had spoke to, I think it's Chief McDonald, I thought I had spoke to him.
Well, good, you, you can listen to Deputy Chief Ken Sallis. He's here, he wants to talk, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back to the panel. Deputy Chief Sallis, I'm Tom's fire inspector. When you submit your plan to the Cannabis Commission for your floor plan for approval, does that include your fire alarm system?
Yeah, so this building is, does not have a sprinkler system, but.
Yeah, it's not big enough. Are you looking to pull one in?
We'll, we'll put a sprinkler system.
You're gonna put a sprinkler system?
Yep.
Okay, there is town water there, so that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, so I, I talked.
I haven't, I haven't had any conversations with anybody from your company.
Right.
It's great that you already met with the police and got your security plan in place, but nobody has reached out to speak to me.
Okay.
So I would, I, I implore you to.
Yeah, so, yeah, I can give you a call. I talked to Aquarian, I talked to an additional engineer. The only thing that might have to change with the, with the water is we might have to put a pump in there to increase the pressure.
I don't, did they, I don't, I don't believe, I, I don't believe you.
There's a, there's a massive water tank.
There's a main that runs right down that way.
Yeah, they, I, I got the, they had the size of the pipe going to the building. I can't remember how, how large the pipe was, but he said it was sufficient. But the only, he, that's what, you know, he said, the only thing that you might need to add is an additional pump.
We can look at it, again, that's what you're, that's, that's, the engineer is gonna, is gonna tell you that. One of the first things that you're gonna need to do is, is, is talk to Aquarian and get a flow test out of the hydrant. They do, they, they do an NFPA testing, which will tell you whether you have enough water.
Right.
And if you don't have enough water, then we'll talk about a, a volume pump.
Right. I think it was just to increase the, the pressure for a sprink, for the sprinkler system is what they were.
Okay, all right. Do you have a, do you have a sprinkler engineer on racket yet?
Well, Cisca will probably contract that out, Cisca engineering firm.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all stuff that they're gonna ask you and everybody. And you haven't come to, to speak with me yet.
Okay.
Then we're, we're kind of, you know, in the water without a runner.
Right.
So give me a call, I'll leave you a card before the end of the night.
Okay, great.
And we can, we can talk now. Early on in the, in the cannabis, there was, there was some discussion amongst the Cannabis Commission and the Fire Commission. I know the plant's are sensitive to light and noise. Because there is a fire alarm system in that building, they do have strobe lights on.
Yeah, noise isn't, isn't a huge issue, but if a plant is in a dark cycle, lights are not good.
Okay, so we're gonna have to, again, we're gonna have to make some provisions with your fire alarm system in that grow area or in that, so when they're in the dark cycle.
So one thing you can do for, you know, the flashing, the fire alarm for the flashing light, if, if there's a way to make the light green, there would be no issue with.
Yeah, the state, the state came down with some guidelines for it. So again, that's something that you and I, we need to sit on and discuss.
Sure, sure.
So there are, there are guidelines from the Fire Marshal's office on, on campus.
Right. Okay.
All right?
All right, great.
So that's the reason why it's gonna get continued tonight is because we'll be waiting for the fire department and you to get together and have, have the Deputy Chief, you know, give his okie dokie on what you guys come up with and everything. And also DPW, I don't, I don't know, doesn't really impact them. I, I don't know what they could be thinking, but we haven't heard from, we haven't heard from some departments. Our own internal fault on a certain, a few certain things too, conservation.
I'm assuming it's a normal curb cut already, it's already existing there to get, get.
Yeah, everything is there.
Yeah.
Okay, no signs going out on Route 20 or anything like that?
No, we don't really want people to.
No, no, you don't need to tell.
You don't need to.
Okay.
Is there anyone on the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Chris Semenow. I live in the town of Rutland, but I own the parcel adjacent to the applicant's parcel, so I just own the trust, the realty trust that owns that.
Okay.
I heard this gentleman mention about the odor control and that there's, is it, is it an order or ordinance right now? If you get five complaints about the smell?
Yes, yes, it's built into their agreement.
Okay, and really, I got no problem with the guy, good luck on your venture.
Thank you.
I'm electrical contractor, I've wired about 25 of those things, about 40 dispensaries, so I, I got no problem with it. But I do know the odor can be sometimes an issue on some facilities that we've worked on. You get the odor outside of the facility. And I just wanna know, with five complaints in that small industrial park, how, I mean, do you listen to one complaint or if, because if I had a tenant in that building, if I built a building on my parcel and I had a tenant that might have an issue down the road, what would their mechanism be to try to mitigate the smell if there was something coming from the building? Is there, do you just make a complaint, is that, is that what they do? I'm just curious.
Sure, so what I read was, language does include in the host community agreement, somewhat general, but five complaints from five, the way it reads, five separate households. I have seen other conditions too, other communities have, in essence, even at the first complaint, the applicant is to, to, to be made aware of the complaint, log it and address whichever way is required. So my, my thoughts, my recommend, recommendation to the board would be to, you know, to build off of that from the host community agreement and maybe add a certain mechanism. So it's probably not just five complaints, but every complaint should at least be looked at, inquired and followed up with the town.
Sure, if there's something like that, that could be made.
Yeah.
I mean, the preliminary plans that I'm working on has the back of my, like, the back of my building would be up to his property, so I am, so I'm only on the corner right there, that's, so.
No, he's, that's old.
Yeah, you're a person.
Well, okay, all right, this is the old wood factory building?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, so my building would actually face that then, yeah. I thought, I thought it was the building behind it. Yeah, I'm kinda cutting to the hill, build mine here and it would face that. Just from a tenant's point of view, I was just kinda concerned. Trust me, I'm not trying to be one of these guys.
No, it's no problem. It's no problem.
I, I, you know, love to see the business myself and whatever, love to see guys do well, but just kinda wanna know what the path was if they did have a tenant that, you know, had a problem, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, you be ready for July 12th?
No.
Huh?
I cannot make it on the 12th.
26th?
I can make it on the 26th.
Okay, that gives you a good enough time to get, we'll get responses from the rest of the departments and you can think about your odor control, whatever, make sure you don't put anything outside the building.
Are you interested in?
It's on the roof, I, I have no problem on the roof.
Are you interested in any of these documents? It shows the evaporator coil, yeah?
Not yet.
So what are we gonna do about the odor part? We're not, we're not gonna go for a third party review on that right now, or?
I don't think there's enough information still.
There isn't enough information.
Unfortunately.
There's nothing to review, it's, it's not even on paper anymore.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's why I think, you know, just a condition that a copy of the application be, be forwarded down to the board and staff to, to review. I wouldn't make the approval contingent on, on the application itself, but just so there's, so, so we're, we're looking at it as well.
We just wanna close the loop on that. I mean, we can approve the site plan, okay, the special permit, okay, with the conditions that odor would be mitigated. I'm sure the Cannabis Control Commission's gonna wanna see how you're gonna mitigate it too. I, I think.
I'm sure, like, even what kind of filters, I mean, I don't know what kind of filters. I, I understand carbon filters, I, I get all that, but how, how do they work, what do they do?
Yeah, so.
We're the experts.
Yeah.
And who knows?
The engineers, I mean, I know how they work, but for a facility like this, it's gonna be, it's gonna be some, some pretty intricate technology.
I mean, you, you don't have a 10-foot smoke stack coming out of the building with.
No, the only, the only stack that'll come out is for the evaporator coil, for the, for the air, but everything.
Gets scrubbed before that.
Yeah, so it leaves the building, it's scrubbed before it leaves the building, it's scrubbed outside the building and then it returns back in. Yeah.
Huh. It's gonna be on the roof. I'd like to see how that works.
That won't be on the roof.
That won't be on, where is it gonna be, inside?
Well, I mean.
Well, where's it going?
It all depends on where the engineers design, design it.
Well, that's why I'm telling you, as far as this plan is concerned, you're showing us the outside as the outsides exist, after you do what you're gonna do, okay? So if you're gonna add stuff to the outside, we don't have a true representation of what it's gonna be. Now, size means something, yes.
Right.
I just want you to be aware of that.
Sure.
Okay.
You don't wanna have to come back with a modification and.
No, I know, no.
That's what we're trying to tell you.
I, I understand.
You can't do that, but I think like the chairman's trying to tell you, it's gonna drag on for you if you don't have all this stuff worked out by the 26th, that's all.
Right.
And like I said, you're still waiting on the Cannabis Commission to finally, okay.
Correct.
Well, they're more experts than we are, so if he, he needs to do something, he's gonna find out there.
Right, right. Which is, I mean, a lot of stuff, so.
Okay, so.
We'll continue to the.
Yeah, entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to July 26th at 7:05.
7:05.
7:05 p.m.
I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Christine, further discussion. May they, all those voting in favor? Harry Dunez, we'll see you in July.
See you in another month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Who was brought up at the last meeting about the 608 Main Street?
Oh, yeah.
How they filled in their detention bond? Doesn't seem, I haven't seen any activity one way or the other. And tell you the truth, you know, the world as it exists right now, it's not a problem, okay? There hasn't been a lot of water, okay? But we asked somebody to look at it, even if.
A lot of Jaws aware of it.
Yeah, just get an update, get, get some sort of.
And my apologies, I will have an update.
Thank you.
Before the next meeting on 608 Main. I did drive by there just earlier today, although not particularly for that, but to check on another project. But I will make note of it, again, my apologies.
I, I, I don't see a simple solution to what's there. I mean, I don't see, you know, how they can kinda dig up the whole driveway and get a.
I defer to the engineers.
I don't see an easy solution there, but I mean, there's gonna be something, but, yeah, it's like.
They definitely changed their site plan, and their stormwater management.
It's an accident waiting to happen. It's an accident waiting to happen, especially on the 12th.
Anyone else have anything?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to second that motion.
All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Harry Dunez. Thank you.